We will call the May 20th Apopka City Council meeting to order. We have with us Pastor Doug Bankson to give us the invocation, the pledge, and the fact of the day.
Heavenly Father, we come before you and we are grateful for your goodness. We're grateful for your mercy and we thank you for your help during this exceptional time as we face things as a nation and as our city, Lord. We ask your continued direction and guidance upon all who take the lead in these efforts. And Father, we thank you for protection over our first responders, our medical staff, and all those, Father, who contend with these things. Father, I pray that you give us a unity as a people, Lord God, that we care for one another and that we're grateful in all of these things. We thank you for it in Jesus' name, that you would bless now this meeting and give us your wisdom as we go over these issues for the people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I, oh, is this the one? Okay. Do I have to come up with a fact? Fact is, it's gonna be a short meeting. Fact of the day here, May 21st, 1881, American Red Cross was founded. In Washington DC, humanitarians Clara Barton and Adolphus Solomons founded the American National Red Cross, an organization established to provide humanitarian aid to victims of war and natural disasters in congruence with the International Red Cross. Barton, born in Massachusetts in 1821, worked with the sick and wounded during the American Civil War and became known as the Angel of the Battlefield for her tireless dedication. She was in Europe in 1870 when the Franco-Prussian War broke out, and she went behind the German lines to work for the International Red Cross. In 1873, she returned to the United States, and four years later, she organized an American branch of the International Red Cross. The American Red Cross received its first US federal charter in 1900. Barton headed the organization into her 80s and died in 1912.
Great, thank you. All right, approval of the minutes. Anybody need changes? Have not looked for motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda. Just public hearing item number one, ordinance 2756, the applicant is asked to be postponed to a date certain of June 17th, 2020.
Okay, all right. All right, proclamations. I had a call, ah, it's been several months ago, from Courtney Gibson, who's the Regional Development Manager for Central Florida and the ALS Association of Florida Chapter for bringing awareness to ALS. So with that, I want to go ahead and read the proclamation. I know she's out there watching the live stream here on YouTube, and so here's the proclamation. Whereas on average, patients diagnosed with ALS survive only two to five years after the diagnosis, and whereas research indicates that military veterans are twice as likely to develop ALS than those who have not served in the military, and whereas ALS has no known cause, means of prevention, or cure, and whereas the designation of, boy, I've gotta read this one, the Umiotrophic Lateral Sclerosis Awareness Month will increase awareness regarding the circumstances of ALS patients and the terrible impact the disease has not only on the patient but on the patient's family and the larger community, and will support the goals of research on ALS, which are to find the causes or cause of ALS, understand the mechanisms involved in the progression of the disease, and develop effective treatment. Now therefore, I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby declare the month of May 2020 as ALS Awareness Month in Apopka, Florida. So thank you, Courtney, for reaching out to us, and we'll have this here in the office when you get a chance to come by. So with that, next up, Susan, I know we had four or five emails that came in either during or after last commission meeting, and we're gonna go ahead and read them in the minutes today, but we're trying to set a policy. We'd like to get the night before by 5:00. If somebody wants to send us an email that they'd like to read, to be read into the minutes, to get it to us by 5:00 the Tuesday before the council meeting, so that we can obviously do that. But, so she's got some that were from last week, and then I guess a couple from this week, so.
Yes, sir. Two came in right after, or?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Susan.
First one came in at 7:17 PM on May 6th, submitted by John Taylor, 1184 East 10th Street, Apopka. His concern is, "I have to disagree with the commissioners who oppose Sixth Street and McGee from getting apartment complexes built there. It was a perfect idea due to vacant land. Why should we stop development to an area that needs it the most because of one neighborhood? That's ludicrous and bad judgment. We have a new hotel with vacant land surrounding with a new development that could finally and have an opportunity to go from slums to suburban. The developers would have invested and cleaned up that area, and it would benefit tremendously. Bring up the property value, attract white and blue collar tenants, draw in other businesses. Stopping development only makes the area worse." Okay. The second one came in May 6th at 7:39 PM. That was submitted by Margaret Kingston, 38 West 17th Street in Apopka, South Apopka. Concern is, "That area on Sixth Street and McGee would have been perfect for the apartment complexes. Martin Ridge has some built there, and because of new development, that area is absolutely beautiful and even has a private school being built there. Now Sixth Street will remain vacant, and crackheads and drug dealers will be running around when a nice community could spring up forth. Bad call, and now Apopka has to clean up that area out of our expenses." Okay. We have one that was submitted by Carol Charlotte of 1255 Countryman Court on Thursday, May 7th at 10:15 AM. Her concern is, "I was extremely shocked to hear that the city makes zero tax revenue for that Seminole area. That's where most Apopkins go shopping, including myself. That's where all the development is occurring, and the Orange County side of Apopka only have car washes, dollar stores, family dollars, and fast food. This is another reason why we need development in that downtown center. This is where many people in Apopka want, and do not stop these developers, let them build and clean up that area." Okay. Then we have one that came in Thursday, May 7th at 10:35, submitted by Jean Sumperton, 746 Clarecona Road in Apopka. Hello, what will be done with the new vacant building in the Regal Wakiva Riverwalk? I think a super target or a Publix would be nice there. Okay. Thursday, May 14th at 10:37, submitted by Cynthia Henderson of 2209 Queensway Road in Orlando, and her concern, her, she says, "My name is Cynthia Henderson, I'm with Henderson Community Builders. We are building a new four-home subdivision at 63 and 67 West 10th Street in Apopka. We are trying to build the city up and help generate revenue. We are concerned about the drug activity and code violations of some of the homeowners on that street, and we want to know what can be done by the city council to clean up that area and make it safe and nice for the community and the new homeowners who will be purchasing these houses."
Why don't we take that one, Edward? We'll look at code enforcement. I don't, we're pretty diligent with.
I spent an hour with her this afternoon, and code enforcement is deep, and I was sort of concerned, and I just think we're doing South Apopka, and they just have to go, they should go, last, she's going to make a, me, you just discussed it, that area.
Oh, okay. Awesome, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. This one came in Saturday, May 16th at 11:25 PM, submitted by Dan Charlotte of 1255 Countryman Court in Apopka. He says, "Do not stop development in South Apopka, we want change over there, especially by the city center. If the Heroes Act is passed in Apopka, and other cities will be rewarded, relief income for the city, create jobs, develop areas that need it the most, and bring Apopka to the next level. Yes, Apopkins want to see change and development, especially in South Apopka. Please don't stop these developers." And the last one is submitted Wednesday, today, at 12:13 PM by Carol, just Carol, at 1255 Countryman Court in Apopka. "I would like to thank Commissioner Bankson for showing great leadership and paving the way for improvement and success in South Apopka. Commissioner Bankson was the only commissioner to respond to me via email about my concerns. South Apopka and all of Apopka is lucky to have him."
There we go. Okay, anybody want to respond?
Well, just the first two, right? So, and I don't know what piece of business that they were saying, were we denied an apartment complex, but I can only imagine that they're talking about the piece of business where we were talking about the density increase. So if they're watching tonight, I mean, they're, we didn't take any action last meeting that would prevent apartment-style homes from coming to that area. So I just wanted to set that clear. You know, we talked about density increase, which was not permitted in that particular section, but we didn't do anything that would prevent apartments from being built there. So I just wanted to set that straight.
Mr. Smith, anything?
The only one that I wanted to reference was the new homes that are gonna be built on 10th Street, and we must realize that one side of 10th Street is the county and the other side is the city. So we need to form some type of partnership with the county in order to help correct that situation there on 10th Street.
Yeah, and one of the things, we had a good conversation with Mitchell Glasser as far as, you know, there's some housing funds that we can, they're more than willing to help us with housing, you know, help. You know, we've got our CRA, which we've got some in fact fee credits that we can give toward new homes being built there, and they're willing to help, you know, us as well. So I think that partnership as far as homes is gonna be good, and I think, I know we've, the chief and Sheriff Mina are, you know, we're, they're working hard down there. I know not a lot of results, and part of it, I think, is without, let me cat out of the bag, a lot of it's courts have, you know, shut down due to the coronavirus, and so some of the, some of the crime issues, we can't, we can't solve until the courts back up and running, so. Right. Yeah.
Yes, but that would be a great addition to that community to have some homes there to bring it up, but it will be difficult to sell a home if they ride by first and see all the activity.
Yep, I would agree. Okay.
Just like to add, we love to hear from you, and those that are watching, our emails are our first initial last names, so mine is DBankson@apopka.net, and it helps us to know where our citizens stand, because we're here to serve you and still make decisions. Not every decision's gonna please every person, but we'll take all of those things to heart. I know that I would speak for everyone on that, that, you know, we're here to serve you, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of those items? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Susan, you want to read ordinance number 2756, please?
Okay, ordinance number 2756, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1CIP to City Plan Development PD for certain real property located at 1506 Rock Springs Road comprising 3.99 acres, more or less, and owned by Mary F. Reed Estate, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay. Anybody want to speak on this issue? No changes?
This is the postponed.
Right, right.
No changes.
Okay, I need a motion to postpone ordinance number 2756 to a date certain of June 17th, 2020.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2765, second reading?
Ordinance number 2765, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use settlement of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from County Rural to City Commercial for certain real property located south of South Fork Drive and west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road comprising 5.92 acres, more or less, and owned by 1058 Plymouth LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Jim, any changes?
No changes.
No changes, okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2765.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2766, Susan?
Ordinance number 2766, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to C N Neighborhood Commercial District for certain real property located south of South Fork Drive and west of Plymouth-Sorrento Road comprising 5.92 acres, more or less, and owned by 1058 Plymouth LLC, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Jim, any changes?
No changes.
No changes, okay. Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2766.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2768.
Okay, ordinance number 2768, in ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here-and-after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Eugene and Willie Williams, located north of Duberry Avenue and east of Hermit Smith Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
All right, Jim?
This is actually a fairly easy one. As you know, we've been doing a lot of annexations in this area for the Floridian Town Center, used to be also known as the 429 West Project. Tony Benj and his group, the Color Benj Land Joint Venture LLC, has spliced together about almost 100 acres, but for a mixed-use project, and this was one of those spots that, that was missing, I guess you could say. Last month, we approved the annexation for these, actually this portion and this portion here, and the map that's in your packet, because that was a recent annexation, we could not include this as part of that, that map that you have. But this, this particular annexation brings in this .61 acres, which is kind of a finger-like projection, but it brings this into that, into this project. And again, it's just a, it's a, it's a simple one, but we'll be bringing the land use and the zoning to you also, so that it comprises part of this, part of this project. That's it in a nutshell.
All right. Any questions for Jim? Okay, thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2768 at first reading and carry over for a second reading.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, city council reports. Mr. Becker?
I don't have anything.
Nothing. Commissioner Smith?
I'm free also, have nothing to report.
All right.
Just staying safe.
Yes, Mr. Bankson.
Well, I gotta say something, then.
You betcha.
Actually, just a couple of things. One, I'm just very excited about the lighting continuing to move forward. We're starting to see it go up, and working with Duke Energy, Pam, of course, sent us a graphic on where those opportunities are and what's starting to come up. So just for the public's sake, to know that that is something that everyone is focused on, and we're seeing the light, so that's a great one. The other one was, of course, everybody's aware of, the issues of the parking on Martin Road in that area, and the chief, I know, had already addressed that, and for those who may be watching as well that haven't gotten to yet, that issue is something that is in the county's jurisdiction, and of course, Commissioner Moore would be the one to reach out to and contact there, and hopefully, we can get some signage up there. But the city, that's kind of out of our area to be able to address that. But they, I know that they have been, when they've seen people, they've been giving out tickets, so we're trying to address that issue. And other than that, I'm done.
Commissioner Bankson, I drove by there before coming to a meeting tonight, and there were no trucks on Martin Road, they moved to Apopka Court Road, dead end of Martin Road.
All right, Edward?
I don't have much, just a few quick things. I guess I'll give you some positive news. Fifth Street, Jim just told me, and I didn't have this on my report, but Jim just told me that Fifth Street, the Fifth Street parking will begin next Tuesday, so you'll start seeing some, hopefully, some, some activity there, so that's a good thing. The, I do want to mention that Kevin Beckett will be leaving us, Public Works Director. He will resign next, he's gonna resign next Tuesday. It's family, he's, this, as you know, he's from Pinellas County, so this'll, this is, he had an opportunity closer to home, and so this will allow him to spend some time, be closer to his family, and so I want to thank him for all of his hard work and services to the City of Apopka. We are currently recruiting for a Public Works Director, so.
And a shout-out to him, because I tell you, he's been helping, we've been going on budgets, we've been, Monday and Tuesday, we worked really hard on all the public services, all the different, you know, departments, and he's right in there, hanging there, you know, giving us advice, and so he's really, you know, he could have just thrown in the towel and said, you know what, it's up to you guys, but no, he's, 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 he made a difference in helping us get to that, that next level.
He has, he's done a great job, so I want to thank him for his services. And then the other thing I have real quick, if you remember, we were talking last week about, our last council meeting, about the pond on Vic Road, how we have, we're beginning to make those improvements, you authorized us to make those improvements, and we talked about the special assessments. Well, I have some positive news, and I think a few of you may know, Chuck Fabrick, who was a police chief, who was one of our police chiefs, has kind of offered to come back part-time and work through those for us. He's the one who basically was instrumental in getting that started, he started our first assessment. And with the land development changes, code coming, changes that we have coming forward to move forward with our lighting, our HOA special, our lights to become special assessments, we've talked about that, he will be able to work through that project as well. So, and then this project that we've got here, he actually had noticed those homeowners several years ago about that retention pond area that we're working on currently, so he's, he has offered to come back and do those on a part-time basis, and so I think that's some positive news, that we'll be able to stay on top of those assessments, and then we've got some other areas that we need to look at, similar to that, the pond that we've, the renovation that we're doing on Vic Road that we'll be able to take care of, so. So that's all I have.
All right. Michael?
Well, I'm a weekend, so I don't necessarily have anything new to report aside from getting, getting caught up and, and getting acclimated to, to city life from county life.
What, a lot of difference, or what?
No, I just have to change my mindset, that's, 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 that's pretty much it. But it's, the transition has been, has been smooth, and the only thing I'd like to state is, you know, my, my office is an open door to any of you to come in if you have any questions or to send me an email. And to clarify, I think there's been some confusion, my email is actually my first two initials, so it's M.A. Rodriguez@apopka.net, so some folks have been trying to send it to M. Rodriguez, and it's getting bumped back.
Yeah, that, anybody has an email address you can't use it over, you have to be able to, so if you, they had an M. Rodriguez 20 years ago, you have to be able to. Ah, okay.
So Smith may be a tough one.
Somehow he was able to pull it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Thanks, Michael, appreciate it. All right, a couple of things, you know, the thing is, just everything moving pretty fast around the COVID thing, but first off, I did want to tell you a little, little interesting news about Arrol Estates. We've had a group of them been meeting for several months, got a developer out of Texas that's looking to maybe redevelop Arrol, and, and so he's asked us to look at a recreational district, which is kind of like, remember when we had the, what was the signature H when they called it a?
CDD.
This one's a recreational district. They want to do, have an exploratory committee to look at, you know, does it make sense for the homeowners to buy just the, just the amenities, not the, not the developable land, just the amenities, so it would be the clubhouse, the pool, tennis courts, and the golf course. And so they want to look, you know, put something together, and so they're looking to put together a, you know, exploratory committee to come up with a budget, what would it cost, you know, what would the clients sell them those amenities for, and then how much would it take you to redevelop, you know, the tennis courts and the pool and the clubhouse and also the golf course. So they're, they want to try to put that together, and then what they want to do is then bring it back to, obviously, they have to have the homeowners and to have to agree that they want to be, you know, taxed at whatever this number comes in at to, as an MSBU, and then obviously, they would have to come to city council for us to, for final approval, but it's probably, you know, six or eight months out, but sort of put together a committee to, to, to explore that, that opportunity option, so.
Is there any nuance to percentage-wise of return votes in the, in favor of doing that with how Arrol is structured, with how many different HOAs they have, the master?
From what we gather, it only has to be 51%. If you went to a, if they did it as a homeowner association, it'd be, I think, 2/3, so I think it's 51%, but obviously, we got a.
It's an Arrol community in itself.
Yeah, so we just, but, but what we want to do is make sure it's transparent, everybody looks at, here's what, you know, if it's $8, $10 million, here's where your money will go, you know, it's $4 million for the land, and $2 million for the clubhouse, and $4 million for the golf course, and where, how the numbers work out. Now, we bonded over 30 years, which, you know, if you've got a recreational district, you could bond it, so it would just be, you know, be on the bottom of your tax bill as far, for, on their tax bill. So it's, you know, it's generated by homeowners that live there, and they really want to take a look at us, well, we don't want to get in your way, and so we're, you know, we'll set up an exploratory committee to look at what that looks like and whether, you know, whether the folks, they did a, I think they had 400, they sent out a next-door survey, and the survey came back, it was about 70% one day, you looked at it, didn't, because we don't even have the numbers, they wanted to look at what, what that would entail, so now they're willing, you know, go to the next step with that. So more to come, I'll keep, I'll keep you posted on that. Okay, next up, coronavirus, the stats, you've got the stats there in front of you, 32712, '03 and '08, you know, it's just, you know, pretty much one or two max, and, so we're doing really well there. What's kind of unfortunate for us, we, we were doing the testing, and I know you know we stopped, well, just so you, I want to let you know why we stopped, the federal government had given a bunch of emergency use permits to, for all these tests, none of them were, were approved, the ultimate approval, they were just under experimental use, and I don't know what, what I would, if I had to venture to guess, I would say that the, they had some tests that didn't, that weren't as accurate as they needed to be. So rather than pull some of them back, they pulled them all back, and so, okay, now we're gonna go back and retest them, make sure the accuracy's right before we let, you know, you, you know, you use them again. So we're still waiting, I mean, it's been two weeks now, waiting on the feds to give us approval, green light, to go ahead and start, you know, doing the antibody testing. So as soon as they give us the green light, we're, we're ready, Chief Wilden's ready to go.
So we had no, no goats or pineapples or whatever it was that they were testing positive.
But, but I will tell you, I don't think I told you this last time, interesting, we had, we had an individual from Reedy Creek, you know, Disney World, that was tested positive with a, with a nasal swab, and happened to live in Apopka, and came back to Apopka and said, let me just do the antibody test, which everybody thinks that the gold standard is the nasal swab. So he comes back, Apopka does our antibody test, comes back, he's negative, so we did a third test, and it came back negative. So our antibody test was the accurate one and not the Disney, you know, nasal swab. So I think we're just all over the board as to, you know, what tests, you know, we got to have the accuracy there, I mean, or it makes no sense, because then if you get this false sense of. I mean, or it makes no sense, because then if you get this false sense of, of security that you're, that you're fine, even though you've got it, or, or vice versa, we just, so as soon as we get the green light, we're, we're ready to start testing again, which kind of leads me into the next, the next part of that is, Orange County got $234 million for, under the CARES Act, for COVID expenditures. And so we're, they had a, they had a, during the county commission meeting yesterday, we're talking about how the money's be, just be spent. So there's, there's part of the money is for PPEs, there's part of the money for testing, and there's part of the money, 10% of the money was to go towards cities. But I had a good conversation with some of the folks from the county today. And for instance, for us to get the testing back, we, we feel like the money, so if you, will not have to come out of our, our city money, it could come out of the county testing money. Because really, what we're doing is we're testing for Orange County residents. So, and we also think like the PPEs that we have bought will be paid for by the PPE money. So they're, they're different pots of money. And then we get down to the, the city money. And so where I think the city money would come in for us would be, you know, we've got the new cameras, we're doing the YouTube videos, and so we had to buy some additional equipment to do what we're doing here tonight. Another, for instance, we've got Elizabeth, who is, runs our museum Tuesday through Friday on the afternoons. She's, she comes over to City Hall now every day, does nothing but clean, you know, doorknobs and countertops. So she's, she's 100% doing COVID work. And so that would be another, that might be under the pot of money that the, the city, you know, would, would be able to get to. But it's still a kind of a fluid motion. We haven't got, you know, some real, you know, hard, you know, data as to how we do it. But what we're going to try to do, Chief's going to work with me, we're, we're going to put together, like, the three days that we tested, we're going to put together a packet that will have the, the test kits, how much they cost. We'll have, you know, whatever, like the signage that we had to get everybody lined up right. And then the, the payroll for the people that were working that event, we'll send that in as one packet. So that, hopefully, that will all go toward the testing piece of the pie that this, the county has. So it's still kind of fluid, you know, they, you know, they're, they're willing to work with us. And so it's, but one of the things they've told us, it is strictly 100% for COVID, not, it's can't be loss of revenue, it's got to be COVID-based issues. So.
Do we, do we have a general sense of how much that all, how, how much that would be? You know, all the stuff that we're trying to do, testing, anything COVID-related equipment, all that sort of stuff?
The testing, that side of it so far was about $29,000.
Okay.
Just salaries on it, so. That's, I'm sorry, that's a little PPE as well.
So, so if we did three days a week, like we were, we were trying to do, at 100, let's say 150 a, a, a day, what would that, $25,000 a week?
Yeah, I'd say.
Yeah, but we're, the point I'm making is, so if there's like $234 million that Orange County has access to, if you just did a, I mean, I'm oversimplifying this, I realize that. But if you just took percentage of population, right, and you took percentage of that 234, we're almost just shy of 10 million bucks, right? So, you know, when, when we're talking 40,000 here, 40,000 there, we should have some level of confidence that when we put this back to the county to use these funds, because that's what they're being used for, we should have some level of confidence that we would get access to those.
Yeah, right.
That's, I'm, I'm just trying to confirm that, right?
Yes. What we're trying to do is where we can, we'll put the money into the, the other silos, which are county-wide silos versus the city silo. The things that I think are unique, like, you know, the camera equipment, and Elizabeth coming over to do that is unique to the city. That would go under, the way I, I figure, we, we probably, at 10% of 234 million, based on our population, the other cities, it's about a million bucks. So, which still is, you know, that's still a lot of money. But yeah, where we can spend the county dollars on things that they, they've got those different silos, we're going to try to do it in, in those silos. So anyway, we, you know, so we're, we're willing, you know, as soon as we get the, the go-ahead from the FDA to, to start testing again, we're, we're ready to go. And what we were going to do last week was we were going to go in the afternoon, because there's a lot of folks that couldn't get, you know, the morning, they, we were doing eight till about 10, was working if you, you know, if you, you know, if you retired or something. But if you had a job, an eight-to-five job, you couldn't get there. So what we're going to do is, we were going to try to do two days a week, we're going to do five to nine, I think. And one, one day would be in the morning. And so, so we'll, we'll give you plenty of, you know, you know, notice as to when we, we get started back. But you know, knock on wood, we'll be back next week, but you know, it's, it's anybody's guess. Okay, next up, you have in there your summer camp information. You know, we're going to start on June 15th. I was surprised, you know, we, when we saw, you know, Orlando and Orange County came out, they were, they were ready to go, they're going June 1st. And I, I didn't know what was going to happen, so we, we kind of just held back. And then all of a sudden, they came out June 1st, and I said, okay, well, let's, you know, how quickly can you get it ramped up, Brian? And so Brian said that June 15th would work for him. So we'll run it right up until the, the Friday before school starts back. So still have plenty of. And so just some of the, you know, the, the screening and what we're going to be doing, which is kind of mirrors what City of Orlando's doing as far as trying to keep counselors, you know, with the same group of kids, so they're not, you know, if there ever was, was a problem, you wouldn't spread it around. So they're, they're going to stay with those nine kids. We're not going to do any off-campus field trips. We figured to stay, stay here. So trying to be, you know, as safe as we can, and yet give the kids, you know, some kind of a summer experience.
So they're allowing a group of nine campers per counselor?
Yes.
And keeping them like pods?
Yes, exactly. Yes, 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 yes. Next up, July 4th, okay, we've canceled that. And we're, we're looking, if, if, if it works out for you, and last year we did Labor Day, because we couldn't, fireworks didn't go off on, on 4th of July, if, if that's something y'all want to do. Brian's came out, I guess, I think we're not the only one looking at Labor Day. I know that Red Hot and Boom has been canceled, and I think the fireworks we thought were, which were a lot cheaper last year for Labor Day, are not any cheaper than this year's 4th of July. So we don't, we can scrub the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, you, you kind of must, because every city's different, right? And so our layout is different. And so we almost took the same approach that we're doing with the graduation ceremonies, and just limited it to a truly firework experience. We may be able to, to still do it. But then, you know, with all these other municipalities canceling, obviously, that might spike up the amount of people that would be interested in coming here to Apopka. So, but are we, have we officially canceled?
Well, we, we had to do it tonight.
Okay.
One, one way or the other, because, you know, we got, we have to sign the contract by the end of the month, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess from where I sit, I would have to rely on you and your staff to, you know, to talk about the logistics nature of it. But I would, again, how we're situated with our, the Northwest Rec Complex and how the fireworks would go off there, if we took the same concept as the graduation ceremonies, we might be able to swing it. But that's, again, you, that's up to you.
I, I agree we could, I just, could you keep them in the cars that long? I mean, that's, that's, I get it.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, you wouldn't have any entertainment beforehand. It would be strictly.
Yeah, which I'd rather have, I mean, I, I guess that's my point, I'd rather have, you know, some entertainment, some things for the kids to do. And so I figured if we wait till Labor Day, but I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open either way y'all want to do it.
I, I'm for moving forward and let adults be responsible for their families and make those choices. Those who have that concern will, will hold themselves back as well. But, you know, as you say, I would have to really rely on the staff to know what kind of burden that actually puts on them to make it happen.
Well, it won't, we can do fireworks, I mean, if all we're doing is doing fireworks, we can, we can do that like that, so.
Because, I mean, if, if you took the same kind of graduation-style approach, and if you simulcast on 1520 again, or 90, or whatever.
Yeah.
And play the music in the cars, and then people just looked at the fireworks, and really just scripted to say, hey, you're coming for the, the fireworks only, there's not going to be kind of this pretty stuff, so it gives a chance for people to get out of their cars and mingle and all that stuff. It's just, hey.
Starts at 9 o'clock and over by 9:30 or 9:45.
I mean, it gives a, a little bit of a respite, but then at the same time, we're trying to promote us being as safe as possible.
Yeah.
As long as staff say they're still risk, I'm good.
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't say that.
Can I say one thing? I think you'd have to, one thing you have to think at too is, you'd probably have to limit, like you said, other places aren't going to have shows. If we're one of the only ones in the area, and we have a show on that day, does it bring, you know, just multiple, I mean, so many cars, or so many things that we can't handle that? Or do we get to a certain point and say, we're at this number, 500 cars, whatever, 1,000 cars, we're done, we have to divert them out the other way? I mean, we have to think about that too, I guess would be something that.
And you keep them in the cars, which I think you, I mean, if you let them out of the cars, then it's, you got to.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So we have to.
I mean, we can do it. So it's not, we're not, I'm, I'm just here to tell you, we got, we, we got to pull the trigger if we're going to do July 4th tonight. So if, if y'all want to make a motion, and then we'll just have to, you know, we'll have to work with staff and, and, you know, obviously, you don't want them there, you really don't want to open it up before 8:30, because you know, you're going to be out of the cars, hanging out. And so, I mean.
Yeah, that's, that's where the logistics comes in. Yeah, because some of these other places, like Red Hot and Boom, I mean, that, that's predicated on everybody being right around the wake to enjoy that experience. That got canceled. But here, again, where our cars are situated, where we can situate them in that parking lot.
We get 2,000 cars, I mean, we, we can do that. No, no doubt about that. I mean, my, you know, I just, it's, it's keeping them corralled in the cars and.
And much of our city will be able to enjoy it without having to go to that facility, because they will literally be able to see it at, you know, on the horizon as well. So again, if we know what our, our capacity is, it's like any other event, when you reach capacity. Our capacity is, what do we do every other parking spot? And, and just limit it that way.
And who's going to, police keeping them in the cars?
Well, I guess we'll have to have Parks and Rec staff. I mean, it's, yeah, that's going to be a, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get in the way of it, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I would rely on staff to, you know, voice up any risk or concerns that we may not be thinking of. So it's easy for me to sit up here and say, because we're, we're operating in theoretics, right? I mean, it sounds good on paper, but what, what does reality look like?
Well, we never, yeah, never been in this kind of situation, but that's for sure.
Again, as with everything, you know, we got to let the population be adults and take care of their families, and tell them this is, you know, these are the guidelines that, that keep everyone safe, and we ask you to please do this so we can continue to enjoy these things and.
Well, I mean, I mean, for me, it's, okay, we're going to spend $25,000 for the fireworks, which is, you know, which we'd spend at Labor Day, or we'd spend it, you know, with 4th of July. But if you did a Labor Day thing, you could have the bands, you could have the bounce house, I mean, we could do the whole, you know, for another five grand.
Allegedly.
Yeah, that's, that's, just it, yeah.
Very well, right. So.
I mean, I, yeah.
I think celebrating our liberty is a good and healthy thing right now.
Okay.
With what everybody's been going through, frankly.
Yeah, again, I think logistics-wise, if we can, if somehow we're approaching capacity or it's getting, we, we kind of set a finite capacity for that area, what makes sense. And once we approach it, you have to turn away. And then if we can enforce, you know, people not getting out of their cars and congregating, if we can literally enforce that, I mean, to me, I think it's, it sets us apart and allows us to have an experience in a safe manner.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll need a, I need a motion.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's my own objection that I can see is, people going to, want to sit on the hood of the car, is that okay?
If we have the cars separated by spaces, are we able to do that?
Well, we can't do that, we won't have enough cars to park.
Then you will have 2,000.
Yeah, we won't be able to get, we got to jam them, every parking spot's got to, would be open. If you figure last year, we had probably 3,000 people there, so that's, it's almost 5000 cars. And, and like Commissioner Becker said, if we're the only game in town, and you really like fireworks, you're, you're going to, every spot will be full. I mean, that's, you know, I think that.
Yeah, and that, that factors into the whole logistic equation.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we, if we do that spacing, knowing that people might get out of their car to enjoy it.
Right.
Like that, right in front of your car, all those details would have to be worked out for us to be done in a safe manner. But we're not going to solve that all right here, right now.
No, no, no. All, all I need to do is, I'd have to sign the contract with Zembelli and.
And then it's a matter of just putting the right parameters in place to make sure it's as safe as possible. If that means you're not getting as much full-throttled of every single parking space filled, okay, but, yeah.
And it's going to take more than Parks and Rec staff to monitor that.
All right. Yeah, I think they're smiling at you, Chief.
I think he has three crews on that night.
With all due respect, I hear what you're saying. And again, I think celebrating our independence is a great thing, but people inside of front seats of a car and a backseat of a car, the backseat can't see the fireworks. They're not going to stay in their car. Unfortunately, we had a nasty incident in a city just to the north of us, with 2,000 people gathering last week, and ended up in a huge brawl between police deputies in a community. And there's just going to be no way for us to enforce, and you're going to put the police department and the rec department in a bad position, trying to get people to stay in their car. It's just not viable. If you want to do it, I agree with Commissioner Becker. There's going to be adults there, they have to make an adult decision, whether or not they want to mingle or not mingle, or show up and, and everything else, that's one option. But to put the police, or the recreation department, or anybody else in a position to try to get adults to stay in their car, it's not going to work. I think Labor Day is probably your better option. It's at least an option that we may be past the majority of this, we may be back to three-quarters of the community back, full community involvement. Again, it's about adults making adult decisions for themselves and for their families. If they want to come and enjoy it and mingle, I'm not sure we're going to be able to control it. And we don't want to end up in a situation where our police are involved in encounters with our community, because we want them to sit in their car, and they can't sit in their car because they can't see the fireworks. If they're parked in a certain part of it, up to the south of the pond or something, they may not be able to see them out their windshield or something. Definitely the people in the backseat aren't going to be able to see the fireworks. They're going to get out of the car. It's just human nature. They're going to get out of the car, because the car's going to be hot unless they leave it running. It's already 90 degrees, and I watched the weather before I came here, and we're looking at mid-90s for the rest of this week. So it's not going to get any cooler either, so that's just my suggestion.
And there's no ability to just simply ask the people, as we do everywhere else, from the grocery stores to Home Depot to all these others, just please maintain your social distance during this season, so that we can all enjoy these things together? And, I mean, otherwise, do we have a, a freedom to celebrate, you know?
No, I, I.
Well, I was in Publix and Publix had arrows on the floor. Says one way. And these were adults that was going the wrong way. And when you say something to them, they looked at you like, what do you, what do you mean? I was in line at the bank and they had social distancing. I was standing on my spot. And the guy behind me touched me on the shoulder and said, can you move up, please? So I, I don't know.
But our statistical numbers with all of those things going on are, are just very positive for us.
I, you know, I don't disagree.
I'm, I'm smart enough to know that I'm not that smart, right? And so, you know, I like to hear the perspective that Chief just gave, right? Because, you know, it's a challenge. And it goes back to the whole, yeah, I'm for it as long as we can logistically enforce all these things. And, you know.
And I don't want to be a, I don't want to be out there, I don't want our guys out there policing over somebody to get out of his car because he's in the backseat and he can't see it. I mean, it's, we don't need to put them in a position like that. But, but.
Boy, I was going to the bathroom.
Right, you know, so.
And there's not any way to do anything outside of the vehicle that we would be able to enforce?
That's what I'm saying. Let's let adults be adults, ask them to respect social distancing.
Right.
Knowing that some people don't know which direction to walk, but.
We can, we can ask them to do whatever we want to ask them to do. Just, the problem is it'll be dark as well. So not going to be as easy to enforce, even if you wanted to try to enforce it, but.
And, you know, obviously everything's so fluid and there's new things happening every day. So we're, we're compounding logistical issues already that you're already dealing with at the city level and other things. And we're adding this on top of that. So. I'm sorry that I'm talking in circles here.
Members of the councils, we were just discussing what, we need to double check what the current status of the executive order that the governor promulgated, whether that this would constitute a mass gathering.
Oh, it definitely would.
Right, yeah. Because to differentiate it from folks going to the beach, that's not an actual organized municipal event, whereas this is an organized municipal event. And while there'd be difficulties in trying to enforce social distancing in it, I would advise to be very careful that we not run afoul of the governor's executive order, not knowing what'll be in effect on July 4, but anticipating that there may not be any changes. It'd be safer to pretty much stay the course in assuming that, that certain mass gatherings are still going to be restricted in executive orders in effect in July.
Here's a, maybe here's a compromise. I, I got to believe if we table it for this week, that if we came back the first week of June, that if they're getting all the other 4th of July events are getting canceled, I got to believe they could come up with enough fireworks for a show for us. But I can't, I can't guarantee that. But, but I would think that, you know, if we took it up next council meeting, if we see the governor's made some accommodations for that, we see that, you know, the virus starting, you know, everything is really going in the right direction. Now, there's a chance we won't get them. But.
I think that's reasonable in light of especially what you said there. That's a different issue. As, again, people, adults are allowed to be adults at the beach. But this is an organized gathering as a city. So we need to know where the governor's restrictions are at that point. So giving us that other time, I'm willing to, to go that direction.
We might not be able to have it, but.
It gives us another two weeks of optics to be able to make that decision.
Well, but it might be too late as well. But that, we'd have to roll the dice on that.
Well, as you said, there's a lot of others that are canceling, I think.
I think there'll be fireworks available.
I think there will be.
So if that's a decent compromise, we'll.
Yeah, I mean, and whatever options that we may be pitched to the council is just logistically, what does that mean for us? Are we, to your all's point, are we operating in accordance with any, you know, state level guidance, state or county? And from Chief's perspective, you know, from enforcement, are we putting too much load on what he can tolerate? And at the end of the day, how do we, how do we articulate to the citizens that they'll be safe if they come there? If we can check those boxes, great. If we can't, okay, push it.
Mayor, I think, real quick too, I think, like you said, we can work with the vendor and see if June 1 isn't too late, you know, with a lot of the cancellations that are coming up or whatever. But it does leave that door open or that option too for Labor Day still.
Right.
Because we still have some time.
We got plenty of time for that one. So if, you know, June 1, you know, the governor still hadn't released us, then, then we can just move it right to Labor Day. If he looks like things are going right and he's going to, you know, open it up for, for mask, you know, gatherings under some, some guidelines, then we take it up. So if that sounds like a plan, I look for a motion to table for, till next, next commission meeting and we'll, we'll at that time take up 4th of July fireworks.
So move the table to the next commission meeting.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith, second segment by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. And then last but not least, graduation parade. We had another meeting here today. Probably 20 people, maybe. Looks like everybody's, you know, they're excited about it. We got, obviously, we'll have, Brian will have your, your sign for you. So if you want to park, where we, where you would park will be on the, to be right at the front end of the parade will be the west side of the pond, the big pond that, that's by the amphitheater. So you'd be on the west side, kind of the northwest corner. You'll see, we'll have a, we're going to have the, the arch and all the balloons. You'll see the radio station.
We've kind of got that 90 degree turn.
Yeah, just past the 90 degree turn. You'll see where the radio station is.
So do we enter where the football fields are or we go to the next?
Uh, no, do the football fields and then take a right.
And then go down and take a right.
Because the kids will be, they'll be coming off Appy the last one. And they'll, they'll be stacking them. What we're going to do is stack them three wide to get them all the way in. And then, so yeah, excited Salem Communications is really excited about doing it. So what we're going to be doing is, we, some of the parents came up with some great ideas. We have a card. And so they're going to be going down the line of kids and have them fill out cards like, you know, what's my, you know, my favorite thing about high school? Who's my favorite teacher? Who's, what, what did I do? And what sports I play? Or what, you know, what clubs was I in? And then they'll run them back up to the front. So as they come by the announcer, you know, Salem Communications, they'll say, hey, this is Johnny Smith, you know, he played on the football team. He had, you know, an average and, you know, blah, blah, blah. So everybody will get, whatever they want us to say about them will be, as they come through, we'll have their, their card, you know, with their, what, what they'd like us to say about them. So I think it's going to be a really cool event. We're, I'm excited about.
Yes. I just want to say thank you to those who work from staff, Mayor, for pushing this because our, our kids really need something special like that. So I, I love that we're doing this.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be fun. So, yeah. So anyway, get there a few minutes early. It'll start at 10, if you want to, want to come out. And then I think we even have a couple of TV stations might show up. So we're, we're excited. So. Okay, with that, I think that's got everything. We will call the meeting closed. Thank you.